All right, thank you everybody. It is Thursday, March 7th, 2024, Brookfield Select Board Meeting tonight. I call this meeting to order at 6:20. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, announcements. This meeting is being recorded by Brookfield Community Media. Is there anyone else in the room recording tonight? Mr. Keller, and no one else. Excellent. All right, announcements. Continue with announcements. Brookfield's Chapter 90 apportionment for fiscal year '25 is expected to be just south of $167,500. The meeting minutes will declare the exact amount, but I can't remember those digits. Brookfield Ecumenical Food Pantry at St. Mary's is seeking donations of condiments, paper products, liquid hand soap, shampoo, and laundry detergent. Items may be dropped off Wednesdays and Saturdays from 9:30 to 11:00 a.m. at the food pantry at St. Mary's Church at the corner of Lincoln and Howard Streets. And for those not familiar, the entrance to the food pantry is in the back of the church, access from the driveway on Howard Street. Let's see, Brad, would you do warrants, please?
FY24-18 withholding $28,574.91. FY24-18 payroll, $190,908.73. FY24-18 accounts payable, $149,524.99.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, item number one on the agenda, Town Administrator Position Discussion. With Kelly's decision to not renew her contract, we are back in the market for Town Administrator, or at least you and I expressed it in that we were intent on doing that.
Yes.
I don't recall us taking, I don't, did we take a vote on that?
I don't think we needed to.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, I don't think we need to, and if we did, it would be unanimous anyway.
All right, so the, so I think the, so the, I know that when Brad and I talked, we both expressed our preference to maintain a professional in that position, and that I think what we want to do now is start planning how we want to move forward with identifying the Kelly successor, or no one will replace her. And so my thought is, the, I think the two options available to us are to go and initiate this directly through the Select Board, or, I mean, when we first hired Kelly, we had a Selecting Committee, and I think part of the, I, Beth, you were on the Board at that time. I don't recall the reason, I served on it, but I don't recall the reason why the Board decided to do that. And so I'm not sure.
I think it was to save us from screening.
Okay.
And there's, I can't remember exactly how it works. A lot of their deliberations, there's not a requirement for it to be an open meeting. And so that way, if people want to keep their applications private, they can largely be kept private until we get to the final selections that get interviewed by the Board. I think that those were the primary reasons that we had cited previously, setting up a committee for it.
Okay.
Screening committee can use exemption eight, under the, over the legal exemption.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So I think we discussed about having a search committee last.
Yeah, the idea came up. I think we didn't make a decision on that, but we did decide to reach out to people who had previously served on the search committee and see if they would be interested in serving if we decided to go with that route. And I believe according to Karen, everyone, Karen, everyone we reached out to was interested?
Exactly. Peter Marcell, I didn't hear from Bruce, but...
Okay. I'm sorry, yeah, I meant to say everyone you heard back from was interested.
Okay, that's what I thought. Yep, so I have the right numbers. Everyone else agreed, and they probably will too. I just haven't heard back.
Mm-hmm. Okay, and I, and you didn't reach out to me, because I don't think I can serve on that.
Well, that's why I reached out to Jeff instead, the chair.
You could have one member of the Select Board on the committee.
Okay.
You were at my interview, weren't you, Ben? With the committee? I seem to remember talking to you after it.
No.
No.
No, and I was not on the Select Board at the time.
I think, I think...
No, you were on as advisory.
Yes.
I think I might have called with some follow-up questions after your interview with the Select Board. That's where you would remember, or else I missed your actual interview. I'm not sure which it was.
So are there any opinions on the committee?
How big do you want it to be? It was seven members in the pack, the last one was seven.
Are we, are we allowed to, are we allowed to, so I know there are certain committees for which the law prescribes alternates are okay. Do we have the option when we structure this to do like five, we have five people that have said yes, can we structure it with five with two alternates?
You can, because it's an ad hoc committee. You can create whatever size or shape you want.
So why don't we, for the sake of like making sure that they don't struggle to get a quorum in case Peter or Bruce doesn't reply, that we make them five with two alternates, structure of five with two alternates, vote, appoint the folks that have said their interest in, well, we don't technically have a charge other than recommending.
Yeah, that's the charge, just that one line.
Yeah, that was the one line. That's what we gave them previously, right? And then we could, we could appoint the first five, and then appoint the two alternates the next meeting. And then that way, if they want to start getting together, they can.
Now, if they're alternates, does that mean they're non-voting members?
You'd have to prescribe that in the charge.
Right, so we would have to add to the charge that they could be, you know, a voting member if required for a quorum, if they've met certain requirements, we can indicate that they can attend all meetings, but they, you know, only vote if, if there's less than, than five, if there's less than five in attendance, but the alternates can vote on times when the other folks, you know, when there's even one absence, you know, one of the alternates can vote, you know. We can basically set up the rules of the road in the charge.
Mm-hmm, yeah. No, just, what I got in my head is that, as, if the alternate's not going to be able to vote unless someone else is missing, that's weak sauce, for want of a better term. And I don't know that, I'm not sure we're going to get interest from people in serving in that role. So part of me thinks, does it make sense just to make the...
But alternates can't typically vote on any committee. They're only there to replace a voting member if there is a requirement.
Right, and that, and so my point is, it's like, if, in order to interest them to serve, do we just appoint them, and do we, do we start with five, and then if we've got two more that want to go, do we expand the committee?
So, so my recommendation would be five with the alternates, with the understanding that if the alternates happen to be, well, in one of the cases, this is like the fire chief, he's going to have a vested interest in showing up to the meetings, whether he's voting or not, and expressing his opinion to the Board, or the committee.
Yeah, and because the alternates, the alternates have the right to participate, they just don't have a vote unless, except to sub it.
And frankly, and I don't know if Bruce Clark will say yes, but he's the type of person that, if there's an opportunity for engagement on something that matters, he generally will. And, you know, I think it makes it safer for us, because then they can always have a quorum.
Yeah, I, I understand that, and I think that's a good goal. I guess the, the question I have is, if it turns out that that structure is suboptimal, do we have the option to reorganize the committee and, say, decide that we'll have seven full members at a future meeting?
I think everything that we proclaim by vote, we can always rescind and re-proclaim by different votes.
Then, then, given the fact that if it's not working out, we can change our mind fairly easily, I'm fine with starting with the, I'm starting with the five members and two alternates as a starting point.
All right, so I make a motion that we form up a five-member Town Administrator Committee Charge, recommending two to three qualified candidates to be interviewed by the Board of Selectmen. Additionally, the structure may include up to two alternates with voting rights in the absence of any of the five four members. If more than, the alternate, if there are more alternates, or alternates than vacancies at a given meeting, voting alternate shall be determined by drawing lots.
I think that covers just about everything.
Second.
All right. Any discussion on this one? I think Beth was fairly thorough in her motion. All right, all in favor of Beth's motion to create the Town Administrator Search Committee, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Now, we should also, for them to search, we should provide them with a job description.
We do need to provide them with a job description. Do we still have a good approved job description?
Right.
Okay.
That will be much more definitive.
Thank you. Thank you for your service, Beth. Are you implying that you could drive a truck through the description of your job? Apparently, got it, okay.
Yeah, maybe it works better. It's just a draft, it's, it's just a compilation of what's been done and what's out there for job descriptions to strengthen the, the description.
Why did you send that? There it is, Monday.
It's fairly comprehensive.
Yeah. I noticed.
I think the other question I would have is, does it, should we get the ball rolling by getting the job posted, and so that the resumes are, so that people are already starting to think about applying while the committee gets organized? I don't think it's really necessary for the committee to be thinking about how to post the job or where to post it.
No, there shouldn't be.
They shouldn't have to worry about that.
To do the posting.
That's true, and I was more thinking time.
And we've recently gained lots of experience in post-identity job description.
How about sal, how about salary data?
So, what we've done with the other positions, because it's not in, because we're in a budget cycle, is that the current, what's been put on that is that the current appropriation for the position is, and then fill in the blank with whatever the job is, and then...
Subject to...
Wages, yeah, well, it says, that's always a thing, right? So wages commensurate with experience, subject to town meeting appropriation. Would you, you would get to that point with your application, and then when you contract with them, whatever you contract with them, negotiate, you would, that would be in their contract, subject to town meeting appropriation.
Okay. Assuming I have to have a special for that.
Maybe, I don't know.
Unless we have it in time for the annual.
So the committee is going to screen applicants pre-interview, check references, that sort of thing? Or would you rather have, how do you want to do that? So, screen applicants, give you the three or four, whatever your top pick on, right?
Yeah, but the charge was to recommend two or three, and that's what we did last time.
And then, once you've got your two or three, I would, I would recommend that you have HR do background checks, or any, any, more in-depth background checking, because you don't want to do too much of a deep dive on people you're not even going to consider.
I mean, the other option is, and we typically do it in the reverse order, but it might be, it might be wise to have them give the two or three recommendations, have our HR do reference checks, or have one of us do reference checks before the interviews, and then decide whom to interview.
That's actually, I don't know.
Yeah, I think so too.
Because some people might self-filter with their references.
Yeah, I think it makes sense to, for the screening committee to winnow it down, and then to check, and then to do a deeper look at the, what the screening committee's doing a final consideration before coming to us for interviews.
Yeah, I mean, I'm fine with the job description as it was sent to us on Monday.
Yeah, I had read through it before.
So, now we would, now in order to write up the ad for, it wouldn't be the full job description, but we could...
It would, it would say the full job description is available anywhere.
Yep.
And it would, it would have the rough, rough idea of what it is. People who are applying right out of an administrative job who don't know what the job is, maybe should rethink application.
Well, but that's a whole other story for another day.
So typically, it's a blur. The position is open, here's where the job description is, the job description contains the salary, information to contact, the Select Board Office, where do you want the resumes to go? It would make sense to go to Karen, as a central clearinghouse, because it's the town email. She can then distribute, so resumes are not public, right? So, so they have to be handled as such?
Yep.
So when they've got them, then she can get the copies out to the appropriate people.
Okay. So I think from a process perspective, so first of all, what, I'm going to make a motion that we accept the job description as provided.
Second.
All in favor of accepting the job description as provided, please say aye.
Aye.
So, I think procedurally, what, the recommendation that I heard is that we would post with the, our administrative assistant's email address as the send-to address.
Mm-hmm.
That Karen shall act as a clearinghouse for those resumes and forward them to the appropriate persons. Now, even though we have a screening committee, personally, I would like a copy of all resumes submitted. How do you all feel about it?
I'm, I hadn't thought about it. I, right now, I don't have a strong feeling either way. I mean, but, we're...
There's nothing wrong with you getting copies of the resumes. So if you want them, then there's nothing wrong with asking them, if anybody else wants them.
We can ask them.
You can forward it as well. You don't actually need to take a vote, that's okay.
That's great, okay. So, do we need anything else that we would need to vote on, discuss procedurally relative to this?
I think we would just, I mean, I think our intention is, we would advertise a little bit in the paper, put it in Indeed, we'd need to, do we need to talk about where we would...
It should go out to whatever distribution list.
Yeah, small town administrators.
Yeah, I've already actually given them a heads up.
Did you find any? Did you find anyone?
Actually, a couple of people, and they've been around for a while, so they've been quiet. Interesting.
I suspect they're wondering what the job description's going to look like. That's their first check.
I know, I think they're probably more interested in what the reality on the ground looks like, if I were them.
But I think the job description's easier for them to look at, and then say, nope, or say, yeah, let's find out what it's like underground.
There's a point in every industry where you start picking your next boss. So, I would suspect most of the people who would be looking at Brookfield are either at the very beginning of their career, or the very end of their career. At the very beginning of their career, because they need to break in, and the very end of their career, because they're downsizing from some larger community to something they think is...
Mostly, I've been asked what the hours are. Nobody's asked me what the salary is. Everybody's like, how many hours you put?
Yeah, so, yeah, so.
Okay.
So that's, all right. So is there anything else we would need to discuss around that for right now?
I don't think so. I think the long pole in the tent with the job description, and how we were going to screen the applicants. And that's why, I know, I know, I know we've been a long meeting with the advisory, but I didn't want to let that ride another two weeks.
Okay.
I thought it important that we discuss it now. All right, nothing else on that one. Agenda item number two, Police Department Insulation Engineering Quote in Your Packet.
So, I went to, I did the RMP, had the RMP done for this project, sent the information over, and Town Council recommended an engineer. I reached out to them, because we don't have the calculations for what's required for the insulation. So I reached out to the engineer, met with them. When, because I'm leaving, I asked them for a phone, this is what, we need somebody to come in, meet with contractors, do the site visit, oversee the project. We don't have anybody here who can actually do that in the construction trade, right? So this is what they...
So this is them doing everything soup to nuts?
Yes, them doing everything. They do the procurement, they do the vetting, they do, they come out and they oversee the job, and they button up the job.
Okay, and do we have any budget line item that we could actually charge for services?
The money for the project that you guys, that you guys, that the Board had approved from the ARPA plan.
Is there enough money in that that we set aside?
I have no idea. We have no quotes.
Okay.
Without quotes on the job, I can't possibly, and I specifically osteopathy will be written for strapping and fiberglass batting, and the reason being, it's the least expensive and it's trite and true. It doesn't compress, you're not going to need to replace it in 10 years. Whereas with the colonial cellulose insulation, it compresses and loses its R-value.
Over time, yeah.
And then some of the aluminum insulation can be used to fill in the edges, because it's a truss roof, so things aren't necessarily going to fit in between, you're going to have the truss, and then the strapping will be underneath the trusses. So you'll put the pieces in, and then they'll be cutting to add the pieces over the top to reach the proper R-value, over the top of the truss wood. Familiar with trusses?
Yeah.
Cool. So, there's, there's some bizarre calculations, but this also includes full removal of the current membrane and system that's there. So, I don't know if they can reuse the...
What do you mean, the $18,000 covers it?
No, this is just managing projects.
This is outsourced management, yeah, yeah.
Right, that's all that is.
Okay, I make a motion to accept the proposal from Dario Designs.
Second.
All right, and so now, we do this, basically we have a, an agent that can...
Does everything.
They do everything.
All right, and then it's just, then, if we, then when we go out to bid...
We've got to determine.
Okay, well, okay, when it goes out to bid, but we, it's like, if the bids come in such that this contract and the, the winning bid exceed the amount of money we set aside, or that we reserve, whatever, whatever the right word is, then we're not able to accept the bid until we top up the allocated money.
Correct.
Because we can't accept a bid until we have definitive, do we have locked-in funding for it.
Correct.
Would we have left an ARPA again? If you don't know it, it's not critical for right now.
I think, I, I think, I think all the money, I, I think all the ARPA money has been...
The one who keeps track of it is Kathy.
Yes.
It's Kathy.
It's Kathy, yeah.
Oh, dear, okay. So can we make a note to ask Kathy what we have left?
She's the one who submits all the bills and has everything that's in the lockson stuff. For you, only has what's actually brought up.
Got you.
But I think that's the, with that, I think we have identified use for all the ARPA money?
We have, except for roughly $800, and I believe we have some left over from the painting upstairs, because I asked for a buffer in case there was an unforeseen amount. It wasn't a lot, it was only way $2,000, but that can be reallocated to this project.
Okay, and then, and then, and then, I know, we were talking after the last meeting, and I think for the, for the police station, we had someone volunteer to be our agent, right? When we built the police station 10 years ago?
So, we had included in the police station, planning for the funding, a 20% management premium, but I think mostly that management was, was that mostly handled by Bill as owner? Bill, did, I think Bill Simpson may have actually acted as our agent for most of that project.
My recollection is that it was...
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah, he was on the committee at the time. They have one of the committee members.
Mm-hmm.
So, who I think is also a licensed contractor. So.
And so, I know, it's like, it's like in...
What we don't have is somebody who's licensed for the procurement to evaluate the...
You allocate the, the thousand for this project.
Yeah, so.
And we think it's probably going to be fifty.
I think, well, with the engineering costs, I think we'll be within budget, but I think we'll be close.
Yeah, I figure probably seventy, I'd imagine. So.
And so, and so Mr. Home was a, so, Kelly, is this contract for putting it out to bid is for bid procure and construction supervision?
No, that's...
Okay, I'm not entirely sure. And then Mr. Home, for the police station project, Mr. Home was construction supervision, for want of a better term, but was not engineering or bid procurement, is my understanding. Mr. Taff, you were involved, can you clarify that?
I was not involved.
Oh, I'm sorry, no worries. I'm just...
I have a question, if I may.
Rather not.
Okay.
I'm just trying to understand how much of this project, it's like, how much of this...
The tasks are very well enumerated within the documentation.
Yeah, I'm just trying, I'm just trying...
They're very specific, and they're very well enumerated. It includes having an owner, project manager, soup to nuts, beginning to end, right?
No, I, yeah, what I'm trying to understand is the, it's like, task six, oversee project during construction. That's the task that Mr. Home did first for the police station.
Correct.
And so, and that's like one of six tasks. So I'm trying to understand, how much scope is there to, would there be to reduce the cost of this contract to be brought in? It looks like there's not a lot. I think, it looks like most of the cost is front-loaded.
I think if we start parsing it out, they're going to start raising their rates on the portions that are remaining, because they don't have the control.
And, and also, we deal with more responsibility spread out wider, more cracks for things to fall into.
Yes.
So, yeah, and so, and so, I'm converging.
If something goes wrong, we can come at them.
Yeah.
A single throat to choke, okay. That's, no, I, I, it's like, I just wanted to make sure that it's like, that this, this, the entirety of this contract wasn't something that someone, we'd already had someone do for us.
The only thing that I would hold off from a standpoint of saying yes today is, if we're really concerned about the details, then we need to ask for the copy of the A1A B105 contract between architect and owner, if you're concerned about what the details of the contract entail, what their liability is for negligence or malfeasance. Right, but unless we're planning on reviewing that in detail, or having KP review it before we accept the bid, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the bid as presented.
All right, I think that's already bizarre, that motion's already been made, and I was just asking some questions.
Okay.
All right, I'm, I'm done with my part of the discussion. Anyone else? No, all right. All in favor of accepting the proposal from Dario Designs for, where's that cost? For $18,740 for, to be owner's project manager and engineering procurement and oversight of the project at the police station, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you, so that is approved. Next up, permitise.
Okay, I, we asked Jay to come for this part, because... Okay, um, I, we asked Jacob to come, uh, for this part, because this also encompasses the security camera question that you and I had discussed, um. In the tech budget, there is an amount for replacing the cameras here, and for the, um.
Highway department?
Highway department.
In fiscal year twenty-five?
Correct.
Okay.
However, because it seemed to be, you wanted to do it sooner, there was some, um, we're looking for funding. Permitize is something that the town voted for, and if the quotes had come in a little bit lower, I would have recommended that you get the cameras first, and then do the permitizes afterwards. However, they're not either, they don't match. They're both in the high end for the cameras, um, and so I'm suggesting that since the town, we specifically asked for permitize at the time, so it would.
Be consistent.
Be consistent to sign the contract for the implementation. Now, because the amount of the conversion to permitize, and this is their out of the box, this is their out of the box, um, service. There's no customization whatsoever. The customization was phenomenally expensive. This will get the system converted and up and running with the first year starting in the next fiscal year. So, um, the cost for the service will be split between the two years, as opposed to one big chunk in one year. I know there's been a lot of positive feedback on this from multiple boards, not all, but.
What are the yeas and what are the nays?
Well, the yeas are that nobody has to look for photocopies of anything. Everything is available and visible, um, in permitize to all the departments. So if somebody, and, and it's real time, so if the data's entered and the permit, or can see that there's a permit, and that, that there's gonna be a, a, a well that's gonna be.
And there's accountability, and there's plenty, and there's good accountability from a standpoint of.
From the contractors and resident side, they can do everything online. They don't have to come to the town hall. They can pay online, they can upload all of their data online, um, they can, I mean, they can still absolutely come to the town hall if, if, that they're more comfortable with that, but it's not gonna be a requirement. Brenda can look and see if the tax is okay, uh, on, on the properties instantly. She doesn't have to wait for copies and, and every, it's just, it's so right there at the fingertips. And, and it makes the permitting process accessible, so it would be building, plumbing and electrical, and it makes the permitting process accessible all the time. The inspectors will have a little bit of a learning curve, they're gonna have to check their email, but if I am, you know, an insomniac, and I wanna file my permit information, my permit papers.
At three o'clock in the morning.
I can do that at three o'clock in the morning. Now, it's not gonna get checked until the inspector gets to it.
Right.
But I have that option. I can also pay for my permit based on the permit fees. And then the inspector will get it and say, this is missing, and put it on hold.
Still, still put it on hold and reject it or whatever.
And put it on hold. So, so when they upload the data, they'll get a notification that the data's been uploaded, so. It's actually a pretty comprehensive system. And the downside is that the learning curve for the inspectors. But the inspector's office won't have to look for permits, they will always know if there's, and it'll help with the growth, because nothing will get missed. And like I said, conservation will be able to go, hey, I know that lot, that lot's got water running, I'm gonna have to see if, uh, let them know that this is something that you need to have them come before. So it gives us kind of like a, a window into what's happening for each of the departments, and if they want, if they can see that there's something that might need to be addressed, they need to be proactive, as opposed to having a, a resident wait for, um, months to find out. Like, okay, so they went to the ZVA and, and, they didn't know that they had to go to conservation, because they found one spotted lizard in their backyard, and there's a vermicule there that they weren't aware of. But they didn't even, not even know what a vermicule is. So it's, it's just a really nice cohesive way for everybody to see what's going on.
Now, I did a, I did a quick rundown of the numbers, and, check my numbers, Kelly, is that, it looks like.
No, I didn't ask.
That's why she went to law school.
That's right.
Haven't you been listening for the last three years?
Cause I'm, cause I'm, cause I'm, I'm looking, and it's, it's like, the, the one-off cost is in, I have it in the twenty-two to twenty-three thousand dollar range, and the recurring cost I have at about twelve thousand for everything that they quoted us.
We're not doing everything that they quoted. Did you not see that those are optional?
I, no, I did not. I, I was scanning.
No, it's roughly five thousand dollars.
Okay.
So it's five thousand three hundred dollars or something.
Okay, so just, so.
Five thousand three hundred is the, is the one.
Okay, so with, all in, it's that much, but for, for the basic, it's fifty-three hundred, one-off, and thirty-nine, uh, not quite thirty-nine hundred dollars recurring.
Yes.
Okay.
So we would put the thirty-nine in the budget for FY twenty-five.
Right.
And we would do the budget for this year, because that's what we budgeted was, was roughly five for the conversion.
And the payment program is not included.
Yeah, the payment, I saw the payment API was optional.
Right.
Yeah, we only have one payment, currently we only have one payment.
Just with the building.
Which is, which is for Unibank. Yeah, so, provided that Unibank can provide service to this, we'd be looking at one nine hundred dollar setup fee for the, for linking the online payments.
But that, again, is, is optional, and it can, it could be done afterwards.
Yep.
So.
Maybe after we see how it's going.
I would recommend just getting it into the twenty-five budget.
Give them six months, get a feedback, report from them, and.
No.
No?
No, cause here's the thing, it, it's the ability to give the payments online, it's gonna drive people to use it. As much as getting the paperwork submitted is, at least you know that you've got your thing in process, if you still know you've gotta get the payment in the hands of the inspector. For the person that's trying to streamline it, or the, or the contractor that's technically starting from out of town, you're gonna be able to like, collect the fees and move stuff along way better. It's, it's a very reasonable investment to go ahead and just plan to do the nine hundred dollars, at least at the, at the, you know, at worst case scenario, when we're playing, whenever it is we're planning on paying the annual payment, is to include the API integration then, which, I mean, it might technically be six months down the line at this point, but honestly, I'd almost want, prefer to have that done. If we can find the extra nine hundred dollars, I would say you do that as part of the initial implementation. I, I would not wanna wait for the online payment integration.
I mean, if you look at the data business, it was a lot of the whole.
They're holding their prices for us.
So do you wanna make a?
I'll make a motion that we, um, do, well, I do have one question. Do we have enough money to do both the one-time and the nine hundred dollars for the API?
We do.
And the tech budget, okay. Let's make a motion that we do the, um, initial, um, setup fee portion of the permit eyes for the fifty-three hundred dollars for creating the building, the program building module, as well as the online payment integration for nine hundred dollars to be the initial phase of instituting permit eyes on the FY twenty-four budget, um, with, uh, the intent to include the annual fee of thirty hundred sixty-five dollars as part of our twenty twenty-five budget.
Second.
Alright, um, and for the eight, for the, uh, nine hundred dollar payment API, do we want to ex, we'll, should we modify the motion to include that also?
Put it in the motion.
I, I, I'm sorry, I, I heard the, I heard the thirty.
Yeah, yeah.
I missed the payment part.
And the API to be done on the twenty-four budget, and the, and the other to be done on the twenty-five budget.
Okay, and then my, my one que, my question becomes.
Thirty-eight something.
Thirty-eight sixty-five.
Making adjustment in the budget.
And that's already in the budget?
It was, yes, it was in my estimate, um, but I wasn't sure if you were, what you were gonna do with this, so, um, we're gonna bump it up to actually, so I just lowered the amount in the request.
Kelly, the, all this information's going to reside in permit eyes system, right? And be available online. Okay, um, do we have the ability to pull that information out? What happens if, three years down the line, we're unhappy with permit eyes? How do we get the information so we have our, all our, all our permit details in our own hands?
They could probably drop it in a CSV and throw it over to.
We have reporting features.
Mm-hmm. So we'll be able to pull that information out if necessary. I know that, the, the, the reason I bring this up is, the, uh, the example is, um, people, um, I'll say, I'll use online games. People bought online copies of games, or they bought online copies of movies, like rent, uh.
That happened with your town webs, your, your town email with, um, CIVIC plus. They gave us back some of the emails, and then helped arrest hostage. Yes, now this has, this has the ability to print that off.
Okay.
We can make paper copies.
So that if, if, in the, in the desperate eventuality, we'll be able to get all our data out of the system and file it away and have it, and be able to meet our.
Retention.
Thank you, retention requirements. Okay, thank you, that, that was my concern. That was the concern I wanted to address. Alright, any other concerns? Alright, all in favor of the, uh, motion to, uh, move forward with permit eyes for the town, uh, as moved by Beth, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, that was approved, and then, alright, and then tied in, uh, town hall, my, uh, the, the, um, the security system, I just wanna talk about this quickly, cause we're up against seven o'clock with the advisory committee here, um, is that, um, I am, I feel strongly that we should try to address this sooner rather than later. And if that, and, cause my, I, from, I've talked to Jacob about this, and his indication to me is that we could, as an initial step, replace the server that record, does all the recording, and move forward with our existing cameras. And then we could replace the cameras at a future time.
How hard is it to pull the data off of the new server? Is it Microsoft compatible?
Yeah, yeah, whatever you put in there to replace would be.
Yes, um, I didn't get into technical details with Jacob, but he did indicate that, um, it would be modern and convenient, and the data would be available, and we would, he would not have to put on his, um, his gray hat hacker's hat to, uh, in order to, uh, extract our data from the server we own, because it's an older server. And so, um, I would, I would, and, we sent that out today.
Did we already have this in the budget, what you put?
It, it is not in the budget as I understand it. It is.
Absolutely not.
And looking at the. Why is it, no, this is all backwards.
Did you open that in? Did you open that in?
No, not to, um, to like, recess this one.
And even, and unfortunately, Kelly sent it to my personal email, and I forwarded it to me. You did. That's why I couldn't find it, that's why I was, that's why I couldn't find it when I was looking for it the other day. It's like, cause I was looking in my town email account. And when I forwarded it on, it looks like Jacob's part was not, um, was trimmed off. So I have to find my personal email, but, actually, I can find that. But I, I believe, I'm looking for the cost of the server replacement, and I believe it's in the, oh, you have it printed out, okay, thank you. How much is it, Jeff?
Brad. Uh, call it forty-seven fifty.
Forty-seven fifty, to, uh, to get us one that has a, um, that is fully legally, that, that meets the legal requirements of such a system. And I think that's, and so, I'm interested in doing that, though I think to do that, we would have to, uh, we might have to look for a, either the, um, reserve fund, or wait until transfers open up, cause I don't think there's room in the budget, there's not room in the operating budget as it is now, but I think this is important for us to do.
And call it fifty-one hundred is what the cameras are.
Yeah, and I think the cameras were a separate expense, and they, they are separable. We can replace the server and keep the existing cameras, and then we can replace the cameras at a future time. We can look to do that in the upcoming fiscal year twenty-five budget, either through the operating budget or through a warrant article.
Can you just repeat the numbers? Sorry.
Um, I believe it's, uh, about forty, four thousand dollars for the server, and then, which, I am, I feel is something that should be done this year, and then the cameras could be deferred to a future year at about five thousand dollars.
I just wanna make sure I heard you right.
No, that's fine, that's fine, that, that's a fair question. I was talking in that direction. Beth and Brad, is there any interest on your part of doing this, or are we, or should we just slot this in for, uh, addressing at annual town meeting?
If we can identify a budget that we can support the new server from, I would support pursuing the new server with this year's funds.
Okay, my instinct is to, I, I consider this an unexpected expense, so I think the.
Reserve fund.
Reserve fund is a, is a suitable s- s- funding for this.
Yep.
You said reserve fund.
And therefore, um, I think, uh, so, I think, so I'd like a motion to move forward this with a, uh, with a request to the advisory committee for, um, allocation of reserve fund for this project.
Second.
Alright, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, alright, and, let's see, alright, and item number, agenda item number five was intended, if we had time, to be, allow us to talk about the budget before we went joint with advisory, but it's seven oh five, and advisory's here, so, um, I'll take a motion to pass over agenda item number five.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor of passing over number five, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Alright, and now we have a joint meeting with advisory committee. Jeff, would you bring yourself to order, please?
Can we take like a two-minute recess?
Sure.
Uh, yes, um, I declare a, two, I declare a two-minute recess of the select.
I'll try to be quick, I love that.
No, that's fine, that's fine, let, uh, uh, we will return in two minutes and reconvene, and advisory will be ready to convene with us. Alright, thank you, everybody. Our recess is over. I bring the, uh, select board meeting into session, and the advisory committee has already called themselves to order, so we are ready for our joint meeting to discuss the budget. Uh, let's see. Jeff, do you guys wanna start, or?
I had a couple of introductory or just whatever, global comments, and then if each one of our people wanted to say something, fine, otherwise just, you know, we can go back and forth, but, um, we're, I guess a couple of months into the process, we've gone through about half of the departments, um, the two issues we've seen is that, again, you know, with the police, uh, union contract negotiations, uh, ongoing, um, we're gonna have to put a, you know, placeholder in for estimated, uh, salaries or wages. And then with the elementary school, uh, we just met with Deb Boyd and the, um, Chris, uh, the finance, the new finance person there. And the, uh, the budget was, um, significantly higher than has been presented in previous years, so, again, I need to ask, you know, Kelly, you were bringing the discussion as far as, cause you've given me a levy, limit number prior, but it was based on level funding, I think, so. With this higher number, we're gonna have to figure out which, where we are. But it was based, I think, because of a couple of, um, families with special education needs that increased, uh, that moved into town and radically increased the cost of, um, that particular service that's provided. And then, um, third thing, as we've gone through, uh, the budgets and also using the salary, um, wage sheets that, that, um, the selectmen had requested, um, that we got a little bit earlier, uh, and. wage sheets that, that, um, the selectmen had requested, um, that we got a little bit earlier, uh, and we determined that, that everyone is still all over the board, each department is all over the board as far as COLA and or wage increase and everything else, so the numbers range anywhere from zero percent level funded up to, I think it's eight, eight point nine percent. So, we, as a committee, have talked about it, we haven't said the COLA recommendation yet, but we're feeling that we should come to a decision fairly quickly to sort of let the municipal employees know more or less what, what, what they should be expecting. And I say that basically because of, you know, the police and the elementary school budgets also, which are gonna be higher than what we'd anticipated, so it's, it's gonna be, I think, something that the selectmen might need to say something, I mean, that's my personal opinion, I don't know if everyone else feels that way.
Did we vote anything previously?
Um, I believe in the past, we voted our, we declared an intention for three percent this year, but I don't, I, I think that's what we did.
I thought we had said it as a, I thought we set that as a minimum. I don't know that we had said that that's what it was gonna be.
That could, it could very well be that way.
That's how I recall it.
I, I, we may have declared an intention of at least three.
And what did we do last year?
I believe we did three percent, I would have to check our numbers. Jeff, do you remember what we did for COLA last year?
Three or three and a half?
Oh, three and a half, okay.
Was it, was it, was it three or three?
I get the years confused, I apologize, but, um, I, I know we normally, again, we're normally going, the advisory committee's recommendation is normally under what is actually voted on in the selectman request, just because we're looking at it from a fiscal standpoint, and, um, I know we were less than what the selectmen had, had, had requested, um, but this year, as I said, we're, 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 we haven't made a decision, but I think we're right around that area, you know, again, but I think it should come from, we need to make a final determination, I think, fairly quickly, because as I said, people are out there thinking they're, they're gonna get whatever the COLA was to, you know, they didn't get the COLA, the eight point, I think, what was the number?
It was eight point nine last year.
Right, and, and people are still, they want that somehow put into this year's COLA. And that's just not realistic from what we're looking at, given all of the expenses that, that have accrued, so I, I think that there's, there should be some public, whatever, dissemination, that, that's just not gonna be possible this year.
Jeff, Jeff, from perspective, in our meeting with Deb Boyd, I remember her talking about the COLAs that were given for teacher salaries for the past few years. Do you remember that part? Cause it struck me, she said there were two and three percent.
Correct.
Right, right, they're, they're, yeah.
But those, but those, those raises are contractually obligated, and I don't know when the teachers, you, when the teachers' contract renews, but I, I wanna say it happened in twenty-one, and that there, and so therefore, those raises were contractually agreed to well, uh, before we had the, the, the recent squeeze-on raises.
Right.
And so therefore, I, I'm not sure, I'm
So when you, when you go through the tables, even though it looks like three percent, when you go through between their step and, and, and COLA, it's close, it's typically between two and five and seven and a half percent.
Yeah, that's my experience with those tables.
And outside the, uh, you mean the teachers?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're coming, yeah, the, the, the ones with union representation.
Right, I mean, I, I don't mean to beat a dead horse, but I just think that every year I say the same thing, I think that someone, the, the selectman town administration membership just get out in front of it and say something, so that we're not down to the town meeting where people are having just totally different expectations as far as what's gonna be, you know.
I'm gonna make, I'm gonna make, I'd like to make a proposal that we target four percent for the municipal employees. So, um, because we, it was, the COLA for Fed was eight point nine last year, and I think we did three. Uh, it's three point three this year. If they're looking for us to do these, any amount of catch-up, I think that's the best that we could do, I think that's the highest we've ever historically gone, except for the times when we did the, the column center adjustments.
And that wasn't a COLA, that was a, an adjustment.
That was a, that was a market adjustment. Okay? But I, I, I think it would, if we, if we think we can swing it, and I don't know what that'll do to our numbers, but I'd like to see the budget worked out at least at four percent, but, I mean, that's a, that's a proposal, I can make a motion. If you guys don't agree, then we can start working through the numbers until we get to something that we agree on from a select board proposal perspective.
Well, I think before we do that, Beth, I think there's two other significant issues we've gotta address, that one was the longevity bonus that went through last year. On one hand, as agreed to by folks here, the, the, the full-timers and then on the town meeting floor, you know, including all the part-timers, which again, I have no issues with, but I guess the, 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 my understanding is that's a one-time event, and we're not looking to do that again. Would that be an accurate statement?
That's what I thought it was supposed to be, was a one-time.
That's, um,
No.
That's not the way to write, that's not the way the handbook is.
No, no, and I don't mean like a, you know, we may not need to do it again in the future. I'm just saying, I'm just wanting to set the expectation that if it happens, it's, happens after a conversation with lots of people, and the town says, yep, we think we need it again, but it's not an automatic every year, I guess that's what I'm trying to get to.
It is not automatic, because I, if I recall correctly, it was, it was funded through a warrant article, and by
Well, for the temporary workers, but the other one?
Well, and I, and my recollection is that not temporary workers, it was, the, what went to the floor was full-time employees, and then it was modified on the floor to include the emergency services workers specifically, I believe that was specifically the, uh, the fire department and the emergency department. Since they, uh, they are, uh, they, they don't, most of them are not full-time, but they have been, a lot of them have been with the town for a long time, and the, and the, the town meeting agreed to extend the longevity bonuses to, uh, those people.
Okay, and all the background is somebody material, my, my, my point, though, is that it was a one-time event until such a time that the town thinks we need to do it again. And whether or not it shows up on town warrant is possibly out of the control of the public, but I'm saying, it's not something we would expect, and I think that's
Well, I believe the, Kelly, what does our, what does the employee handbook say on the matter?
Okay, so first the employee, you're asked, I don't know who anymore.
That's
Tim Brown.
Tim Brown, okay. Um, Tim is absolutely right. First, well, the employee handbook is not a contract. So this would come before the town, provided that it is something that can feasibly, feasibly be funded within the limit. So it's your call every year if you wanna do it or not, it's not an automatic. And he's, he's absolutely right, so the, the way the employee handbook is written is that it would begin in FY twenty-four. Because as, as I stated, it's not a contract, you are not required to put this on the warrant every single year. But you have the option to do so.
Okay, thank you, that answers that, uh, my first concern. Second concern was, um, obviously we can't control what happens on the town meeting floor either, right? But the, but the challenge from town morale is, is pretty high, as you folks understand, is if people are all getting X percent, and someone steps up on town meeting and suggests one individual or group should get a lot more, then that causes real angst, and that's part of our problem now, is that the expectation from others was, well, someone got a bunch more money than the rest of us, how does, and I understand the personnel board for some reason has been dismantled, so trying to manage that's gonna be more challenging, but I guess in order to go along with Beth's suggestion, four percent, I would wanna have some, um, you know, understanding, or some level of assurance amongst ourselves, that in, at town meeting, we will specifically argue against those things, because they're, you know, it, it gets out of control, I mean, is that your same opinion of the select board, I'm assuming it is, right?
Well, other, other than I would, I would, I don't see it as out of control, I see it as putting additional strain on the budget.
No, 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 you missed my point.
No, I, I think he means more the wild, the Wild West aspect of town meeting, it starts to, it starts to get
The unplanned aspect.
Yes.
Or, or, okay, that's, that, thank you.
Especially the one that's way out of line with everyone else.
Looking, looking at, yes, with uncontrolled meaning unplanned, yes, I agree.
Yeah, I don't think you're gonna see any member of the select board pulling what got pulled at town meeting with a member of the select board proposing an individ- one individual for the
No, I wouldn't think that would happen, I'm suggesting is that we have a very strong united argument to try to make sure, if you, I, I expect that I will be more ready to deal with that eventuality should it happen, this time around.
Uh, does the compensation scale for longevity differentiate between full and part-time?
The handbook said it is only for full-time employees, and they changed it on the floor.
But, but is there a different scale for part-time employees?
No, because it only addresses full-time, it's not, so they're not supposed, they're not even on the scale, the part-time employees are not even on the scale.
So, so Marty, answer your question. A full-time employee with five years of service got X dollars. A part-time employee, if they were included in longevity bonus, got that same X dollars. Does that answer your question?
That does answer my question, so what are we gonna do about that, is that fair? Do we need a change to the compensation scale?
Marty, Marty, the employee handbook only specifies full-time employees. The change was made on the floor, that change was not in our control, that change was not initiated by us. So that is, it's like, so, whether it's fair or not, there's nothing in the policy or in what we proposed on the floor last year that was un, that could be cons- that I would consider unfair.
Right, and so the scenario, the biggest scenario that we have is we've got two choices, right? Either we put it on the warrant, or we don't put it on the warrant. If we don't put it on the warrant, given that it's an annual town meeting, there's always the risk of exposure, that somebody will citizen petition it onto the warrant, okay? So one of the things, to your point, and it's probably a, a, one that has merit, okay? Is we probably should put on a future agenda for us, since we don't have a select, since we don't have a personnel board anymore, to put discrete rates for part-time versus full-time folks, or just take the longevity thing out. Now, one of the things I would recommend before we do that, is to do a survey of other communities within the Commonwealth.
Comparable communities.
Comparable communities, to say, do they have a longevity bonus or not? If they have it, what are they, okay? Because at the end of the day, we are, I know people will say, it's Brookfield's budget, Brookfield can do stuff different, you know, yes, we are free to do stuff different, but we are, we are competing in a Commonwealth market for quality employees, so we need to take a look at our full compensation package, okay? I get the constraints, I'm a taxpayer too, I don't wanna see my shit go up either, but at the end of the day, right? We, we also owe a certain level of service and a certain level of, of, of quality candidate as we have vacancies.
I look at it this way, if you pay crap, you get crappy employees, to be blunt.
Well, we've been actually very fortunate, given how we pay in this town.
Yes, I, I, we, we are, and, but we've also been, we've also seen that in some, in the past. Not a complete, I would not think that's a present situation.
So I think, I think that's, those are some of the questions we need to ask ourselves. I, I do appreciate what Marty is saying, is I think, if we're going to leave it in the handbook, if we do the survey of the communities, and it stays in the handbook that we do longevity bonuses, we should have a different scale for part-time versus full-time, because at least lowers our exposure on the town floor, relative to, you know, it being scaled appropriately for folks who are full-time versus part-time.
Thank you, Beth.
I, I'm sorry. So just, just the one other thing to sort of wrap that up, again, I was talking about sort of the, a level or theory of, of expectations here, so that's the other thing that we've heard, which is why I think Tim brought it up, was that people were, maybe they misinterpreted or didn't hear that it was a one-time longevity, and now they're, they're sort of thinking, oh yeah, we're gonna get longevity again this year too, and I noticed that I know the library is a separate situation, but there's something in there, uh, that I guess they had, had voted that there's a longevity for the for the library, uh, director, so, again, that
It's contracted.
Right, contracted, so again, that might cause some of the confusion, but again, there's a couple of different things going on, so people say, well geez, okay, we've got longevity again this year. So these are things that I'm just, as we're going through the, the weeds, just trying to let you guys know that, you know, there probably needs to be something stated as far as this, because the salaries and the wages are always a very, you know, important issue. And, um, so, that was the extent of my general comments, and I think Sarah had one or two questions, I don't know, Bob, do you have, you don't have any, okay.
I just had a question about the highway superintendent where it stood. I saw, it got reposted, so I just didn't know if it was a discussion topic of not having one, or if it was a discussion ever, or is it, where does the wage stand and how much?
The the highway department, the supervi- the superintendent of the highway department has an allocated line item in the budget for this year. And so that is, that controls how much we could pay someone coming in this year. Uh, if we, since we are budgeting for fiscal year twenty-five, if we think it necessary, we could reconsider the number, or we could just put a, put a COLA on it. And my recollection of the board's discussions is that the board intends to hire a permanent highway superintendent. We, uh, have, we have not yet found someone that we feel is the right fit for the position, and so therefore, we are continuing the search. And does, did I misrepresent our thoughts on the matter? I just, okay.
Okay.
All right, did that, are, are you in the answer?
Yes, I am answered, yes.
Okay.
Oh, oh, and the Excel spreadsheet, so I do have a question too. So I am obviously new to the advisory committee, so, uh, they lost Caitlin, so I am bringing my iPad to the meetings now, and I don't know if we can unlock the Excel spreadsheet till we can, and have our own column?
You have your own column and it's not locked.
So like the version I have is locked, so can I get, so can you?
I don't know how you got one, because I've never locked the column that is the advisory's column, it's, it's not locked.
All right, so like I
So, meet with me and I'll, we'll, we'll work on it.
Okay, just, just to clarify, I think, I think we just, you know, you just go around the spreadsheet and it, it looks locked everywhere. But you're saying there is one column?
There is, yeah, so after the green, there are two columns that, that are present, the first column is advisory, you can put whatever you want there.
In the fir- in the first, yeah, in the first one, and then the rest are locked, yeah, okay, yes, yeah.
I, I only left that unlocked, so you could do whatever you wanted.
Okay, so our, okay, so the only column that we can edit is that first column on the first page, on the first cell, okay.
Okay, okay, and let me just, now that down, so the, it's actually summation sheet, there's a, there's a column we can, that's unlocked.
Yes.
But the underlying sheets, that's not the case.
Correct, because those are what the committees presented. So, everything is linked and everything feeds from there to
No, 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 I get what you're saying, so you want everything to go into the first section, to the columns for us, okay.
Column H of the FY twenty-five sheet. Right?
Yep.
Okay, yeah, and I, I just checked the version that I have, uh, that column is unlocked, I would be able to put a number in.
Okay, perfect, yeah.
So, so we got off something that got accomplished tonight.
So, can, can I ask a, I'm sorry, can I ask a
I'm sorry, go ahead and then I'll, it's like
Okay. So, I know, and this is gonna be slightly off-topic. Well, not, it's not off-topic, it's off the flow of the conversation, but I, I keep hearing people say, well, we can't plan because we don't have the contracts yet, so we're just gonna level fund. That's, to me, a nonsensical stance. My recommendation would be, for planning purposes, that we take a look at what previous contracts have yielded on the police contract, which generally speaking is roughly five percent a year, okay? Knowing that
So then we're, I, I get where you're going.
You get where I'm going, we, we roll five percent into this year's budget, right, because we didn't, and I don't think we made any adjustment on this year's budget, because we didn't have a contract then either. Compound it five percent for this year coming, and I think that that will at least get us close enough that, that will be in the right neighborhood, and for a planning factor perspective, it will, it will put us in a position where we're not gonna have no crap, and might even alleviate the, the cost and, and complexity of a special town meeting.
Or you might not need to do one.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, it's helpful, and, because we were gonna assume a number, right, we didn't go, thanks for the five percent.
Yeah.
But we were gonna just do that, cause we knew we couldn't do anything else.
Yeah, you gotta do something, and, and historically speaking, and I don't know where it's gonna land, right, I mean, the way that this is going, and I've been part of those negotiations before, and people thought it was a goat rodeo when I did it, and it's, 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 it's now a three-ring goat rodeo, so. and people thought it was a goat rodeo when I did it, and it's, 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 it's now a three-ring goat rodeo, so.
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
No, I, I forgot when I was on the same subject.
On the fire, on the submitted fire department budget, the chief salary was listed.
Marty, may I, may I suggest that if we're going to discuss specific items that we proceed sequentially through the budget and bring them up, unless there's something particularly urgent and wide-ranging, and this is specific to the fire department budget, can I ask you to hold that until we get to the fire department section of the budget?
Are we doing that?
Rather than jumping around. That was my intention, is to, is to go through and go by section by section and say, what do you got, it's like, we've presented numbers to you. What do you guys think? Do you, do you agree with the numbers that are presented to you? If so, great, we move on. If you have concerns, we'll stop and we'll discuss them. It's like, and it, it, because I'd like, rather than jumping around, I like to just proceed sequentially.
Fine, I have no problems.
Okay, yeah, but you'll get your chance to talk about the fire department.
Yeah, I mean, the bulk of our conversation was gonna be weight, it's all the rest of the stuff, you know, fire team can't explain why it's supposed to be ten percent more than last year, because of all the stuff he needs, right? So we understand that. So the only, the only thing that was vague in our minds, I think, speaking of myself, was this number. And if Beth is suggesting four percent, or three, or five, or whatever the select board's thinking, just make sure we're, we understand what that is, and we make our own determination if we think that's appropriate or not. And if we think it isn't, we, we plug in four percent, right? So that's, I'm okay with that. But in terms of, you know, line by line, I mean.
I was thinking section by section, and just sort of, does anyone have any questions on select board general government? If not, does anyone have accountant, assessor, treasurer? And we can even do it in bigger chunks if we find we're going too slow. Is, is what, is how I was thinking we'd do it, I don't know, I didn't discuss it with the other board members, and we haven't discussed it with you.
No, no, my, my only concern is that each, each of you individually go through what has been, what Kelly has compiled and presented at some point, and, and then I don't know if you're ready to do that or not. We have our own, we've already approved half of the departments, we're still, since we haven't done the COLA, we're still gonna do it the way we used to, which is level fund the salaries until they get to the floor. We'll make a recommendation, but we're not gonna put the number in, because that'll be decided on the floor. And, but if there is any other substantive things that need to be brought up other than what I mentioned, and just in general, and, and again, I, I can't emphasize enough, because I have, I've worked, you know, we've worked with Deb Boyd, I don't know how many years, but this is the first time that I've seen her a little concerned. So I think if you could review the elementary school budget, she has suggested a couple of things that she might be able to, to decrease, but that would be sort of the last, the last resort. But that, I think, is gonna be a major issue, you know, gonna happen, because it's such a large part of our entire budget.
Yeah, I'm, Kelly, check me on this, but I believe the select board has minimal to no authority over the school budget that's submitted.
Zero.
Yeah.
The elementary school budget, you can suggest a certain amount to, not the regional allocation, but the elementary school budget, we have control over that.
I believe all the school budgets are controlled by the elected school boards. So the ele, elementary school budget, and we have an elected school board, they vote on the budget, they recommend it, and the select board has, may, make influential statements to the town, but has no control over the budget. And so we, so we have our political bully pulpit where we can say, yes, it's great, we recommend you pass it, or we can say, or we can, well, we could thumbs down it, that's.
What, what I'm trying to say, Tom, is use your influential bully pulpit. I think it's a situation that we need to say that, yes, they have not voted and approved officially yet. They asked if we think that we're gonna have a problem to get back to them.
Okay.
And, I mean, you were there, Brad, so you can recite word for word to Tom.
Okay. I, I, I thought.
There could be, and they, and they have actually, because of the situation, they've added fifty thousand dollar extra from their school choice budget to the elementary school budget to bring the number down. So now it's only at three hundred and fifteen thousand, or something like that, over last year's budget. So that's the only thing I'm trying to say. I'm trying to be very, very nice and direct as far as political, and, and, because you do, you guys do have influence. And even though you, we don't, we can't say, we don't approve it, but we just say, look, we really would, you could help us out, because.
I, I am friends with two of the three members of that committee, and that board, excuse me.
There you go.
You haven't had any inclination on Tintasca, right?
No, I mean, just from what she said, next week, but she said it was gonna come in basically leveled, the assessment's gonna come leveled a little bit less, so she's not worried about that, but it's the elementary school budget, so. Did you guys have any specific things?
No, if we're gonna go through budgets, I hope we don't get started.
I was gonna say.
Well, it's like, well, hopefully we don't have too much, I mean, you guys, yeah.
Section one.
All right, so, so I would say general government.
Is there anything?
Any, any, anything we need to talk about here?
General government, they have titles up here.
Uh, total select, down to total selector.
Can I look over your shoulder? Because I tried to pull it up on the phone, it's difficult.
Yeah, I mean, I'll, please look into the other ones.
This is the, this is the part that we can edit, this part.
You know, we're still gonna have to take the worksheet, we'll just go back.
Let me suggest this.
Yeah.
Since technically this was, it's like, why don't you guys order your questions from the top of the budget down, and?
I'm, I'm fine right now, unless Marty has something, or, or Tim, or Bob, or Sarah. I'm, I'm looking for input from you. We've, we've gone through on a broad brush, everything, and we, the, the main thing that's, that's, as I've mentioned, is the COLA, which is gonna drive the salaries up and the, and the elementary school budget. The other ones, you know, there's a few things here or there, but I, I don't think there's like thousands of dollars, right? So it's not, not, not to spend the time here doing that.
The reason I suggest it this way, Jeff, is because Kelly has put the budget together.
Right.
It's like, and you have your thoughts on the matter. It's like, we, we have ours, we have, we have access to Kelly, and so if you look at these numbers, and I know like last year, when we reviewed it, and we reviewed it later, it was in May, there were some numbers where there was a divergence between what the select board was thinking and what advisor was thinking. So what I'm asking for now is, can you help us under, it's like, so, and you've already identified wages and the cost of living, that's something that we need to figure out and come together on. What else in the budget do we need to figure out and come together on? I know Marty has a specific concern around the fire department. And so it's like, and so I wanna, it's like, because if you've looked at these budgets and you, at the departments, and you've been like, yep, that, that's reasonable, that's reasonable, that's reasonable, no, minimal concern, minimal concern, whoa! It's like, we need to be talking about the woes.
Well, that, that's what I just said. I thought you were agreeing with me. But it's like, you want us to start, rather than you tell us after you've already gone through the budgets? Yeah, I don't know if you've looked at the budget or not, that's always the issue. That's, that's our situation, is to look at it, so I don't.
I looked at the budgets, I've looked at the budget some, but it's like, I don't know where I need to look deeper until you raise your concerns.
Okay, so we don't need to waste our time with the ones we've already approved. We have several large budgets that we have yet to finish, and maybe those are the ones we'll discuss.
Yeah, and, and I guess I would say, yeah, if you've, if you've approved and it's in line with what, what Kelly has recommended, then.
I haven't recommended anything.
Oh, okay, or what Kelly has, then what Kelly has provided, then what Kelly, Kelly has provided.
All you've done is aggregated the response.
Correct.
Okay, thank you for the correction, Kelly, what Kelly has provided.
Right, presented, provided, that, that, that's fine.
Can I just bring up one thing in the first section? And this is just my own question. So town administrator wages FY 25, ninety-three thousand, but based on your job description, there's probably more job duties than what you currently have right now. Should we still be?
No, I, I do what's in that job description.
But I thought there was like some more, uh.
She enumerated what she's actually doing versus what we originally hired her to do.
Is there anything else?
And is, do you think that's a good number to leave there? I guess is what I'm getting at? Okay, but that's all.
I do, I think, I think that's a very, I think that's a fine number, but you're not so.
I just didn't know if we should be looking at it more than that.
That, that's what I said, that's what I said, yeah.
Yeah, I think I can, I, you know, I can agree with Jeff.
Rephrase it for me, yeah.
That, that, you know, we, all the, all the departments we've looked at, and again, that was my question about the backup sheets, because I know they add up to the front sheet, but it's just not as easy that way. But one of the, one of the issues was, is the fact that a lot of people came through level funding, which no worries, that's fine, and then for the places where we saw increases, we did have some conversation. We haven't had all those meetings yet, we met with Chief Martel the other day, so we understand where he's coming from, and we agreed with what he's talking about. You know, we didn't get a chance to approve that budget because, because of various reasons. But, so, but I think overall, the, the budget as, as, as presented from everyone seemed appropriate for what their needs were. There wasn't anything too crazy, except school budget. And now that we've had this conversation about COLA being somewhere four percent, then that makes that a relatively simple thing to walk through as well. But, you know, besides that, there, you know, there are other issues that may or may not be more important than going through this line by line. That is, the big ticket items that, you know, are coming up somewhere somehow, you know, from the elementary school roof to the, to the highway department's need for additional equipment, to the fire department need over the next few years for potentially some equipment. So I guess the, the, I'm just thinking about the best, best use of our time, is more, could be more of a conversation about those bigger ticket items and what the thoughts are between the select board and the advisory meetings. Again, with the COLA thing hopefully sorted, the rest of it's really just pretty straightforward.
So what did, what did our free cash come back at this year?
Five hundred and forty-four thousand.
Okay. And do we have from the accountant, the various fund levels of our stabilization and the various like capital improvement fund and OPEB and all that happy stuff? Okay. So now, do y'all, do they have?
No, no. Do we have to make some copies?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
So I'm giving you that because there's a stabilization information on it, but that, that whole thing is not.
It's just a working sheet.
It's a working sheet, it's not.
So, but we could provide them the number of the free cash and stabilization funds.
Yeah, that's actually here, I think I.
Is it in there?
Okay.
And, and the, and the reason why, I'm sorry, and the only reason why I'm saying that is because, to your point, we've got a lot of big things in front of us, school roof, but, you know, other capital expenditures. I think one of the starting points in the planning is what have we already set aside, and what do we need to continue to set aside, right? Because OPEB, we're gonna need to continue to put more money away, we're gonna be.
The stabilization accounts. All right, so I can give you.
Do you wanna give us a verbal stabilizations?
So in stabilizing, in, in compiled stabilization, you have eight hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars, eight hundred and forty-nine, eight hundred and seventy-three oh four. That's a combination of all the stabilization accounts. In your general stabilization, it's five hundred and eighty-two, six seventy-six point seven. Capital stabilization, let me know in a minute.
So just, so the Excel spreadsheet shows a free cash thing that looks like proposed.
Yes, that's, yes.
Was this one of the tabs on that spreadsheet or not?
No.
Okay.
This, this is not, no. Because it fluctuates, it changes, because they're investments, so it changes monthly. General stabilization is ninety-two thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars and thirty-four cents. You have rec stabilization, OPSP rec stabilization, which is specified for rec use, is five thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two dollars and seventy-four cents. Roof stabilization is one hundred and fifty-five thousand, one hundred and nineteen dollars and forty-two cents. Opioid stabilization, again, special purpose, same as roof, thirteen thousand, seven hundred, seventy-six dollars and twenty-five cents. And then property improvement, one hundred and eighty-two dollars and two cents.
Thank you a lot for that.
You know? Between your general capital and roof stabilization, based on a quote that came in from the school, they're gonna have to fix the roof today. However, the school did not ask for a warrant article to fix the roof.
No, I mean, they, they were more just saying is that the number has expanded, and then I think Brad's thought was, well geez, if we can anyway do it because of our bond reading, you know, improvement or whatever, maybe we should try to take care of it sooner rather than later, because the costs are just going up.
Yeah, I mean, one, it's just gonna go up, and two, there's gonna start to be damage to the building, and that's gonna make the cost go up even more, right?
So the, the proposal that the school sent over, the quote that the school sent over has two different roof structures. One is over a million dollars guaranteed for twenty-five years. One is four hundred and seventy-four thousand guaranteed for thirty years. Don't look at me, I didn't write the proposal. I'm just giving you the information.
That's a broad spectrum.
That's a very broad spectrum, it's a very.
So those are newer ones, Kelly, because the last ones we saw were like six, eight hundred thousand for some sort of temporary repair.
Yeah, this actually is roof replacement, both of these costs are roof replacement. I sent it to Brad, he asked for it.
I haven't seen that, is, is that the difference?
It came out in January, I got it from Deb in January.
That's the same one you have, the one we asked.
But they have not asked for a warrant article.
Have we, have we reminded everybody that warrant articles are due by what date?
Yes.
They, they might have just not known to put it in there.
Well, they know.
No.
Kelly, were those costs for the safe roof replacement? Or is it the difference between the flat roof replacement and the pitched roof replacements? Because they have the Riley roofs there at the school.
I'll send you the report, and then you can, you can see what they're talking about. It, it specifically targets areas on the roof in the report.
And I think they were talking about the pitched roof versus, because the flat roof, I think, is what's over the gym, and the pitched roof is all in the front section.
This, this is the one that we got.
Yeah, right, yep.
So we got the nine oh four to the one, one point eight. So is she talking about this, and this is, oh, so these two are the ones?
There are two different types of roof structural replacements. The report itself shows you exactly where the replacements will take place.
I see what she's saying, I see what she's saying.
Your, this one.
Yeah, check the data.
So it's, that's an either or not an and?
All right, so that's it, okay, so.
So that proposal is an either or not an and?
Yes.
Ah.
I believe so, yeah. I sent it out here. I'm pretty sure that's the same.
Okay, well. Either way, I, I think, you know, Deb Boyd did mention it in passing in our discussions with her. She thought that due to the size of it, you know, there should be some sort of a subcommittee or something appointed to, to look into which one of the things is better, since it's a large sum of money and somewhat technical, so.
Yeah, he's a lot of.
Revising the capital improvement committee.
Maybe that's why she didn't give a warrant.
We're better at purpose committees than we are at general purpose committees, so I think if we, if we put out an ask for, just for the school roof design review or something like that, or, then we'd have a better chance of getting people, because it's a finite period of time, right?
And then we have to do a little more.
What's that?
And then we have to do a little more.
Oh, yeah, but, you know, or it's the same thirteen people, so.
Because the, the issue of the warrant article didn't, didn't even come up. I think she said it was such a wide range, and she wasn't sure, you know, what, exactly which concept to go with, I guess. I don't know.
Yeah, if you go with the million dollar, you're gonna need to have an OPM as well.
OPM?
Owner, project manager.
Okay.
Representative.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I think we.
It's such a big project, we have to hire one.
I believe in the OPM algorithm.
Yeah, but if one estimate is forty percent of the others, there's obviously something, they're not, it's not apples in the form. It's not, it's apples and oranges, you can't have too big of that crazy difference. That's all, it's, it's very.
I don't know, we've, we've, we've seen, we've seen similar discrepancies. Typically, I would agree with you, okay, because what you say makes sense. But sometimes what contractors come up with, back with for municipal projects, and common sense got nothing to do with one another. For Lewis Field, we had quotes that ranged from like seventy-six thousand dollars to like four hundred thousand dollars. And they, we had better reviews on the construction joint that had the seventy-six thousand dollar quote than the one that had the four hundred K quote. So you would think that what you said is true, it, it just might not be true, so. So I think we just, I think you're right that we need to understand what's in those bids, that's why we're recommending a committee to make a recommendation into town. My recommendation would be, we, we vote tonight to put a whole article without the funds determined on the annual town meeting warrant for the roof, okay? We also, and we can't probably. town meeting warrant for the roof, okay? We also, and we can't probably vote it now, but we put on our next meeting to form a school roof committee to advise the town meeting on which roof proposal that they recommend and why, or to recommend to us so that we can recommend to town meeting what that budget ought to be, and we can put the, make the article be a construct that allows us to go for lending instead of cash, if that's the right thing to do from a funding perspective.
And should we be coordinating this with the school committee?
Probably.
Yeah, this.
But I mean, we own the warrant, but we can, we could recommend that they ask us to co-sponsor.
Also own the school.
Yeah, so, 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 I mean, it would be nice to have the school committee co-sponsor the warrant article, so it's clear that we're aligned on it. And it may be that we want the roof committee to have a member of the board of selectmen, a member of the school committee, and three, you know, at-large representatives from the town.
Yeah, the school committee, the elementary school committee meets next Tuesday.
Yep.
So if we want anything on their agenda, we've got a small window.
So, I mean, it's up to you. Do you want us to, should we reach out and have them put it on their agenda first?
I think, I think we should have them, I think we bring, I think we bring the idea to them. We discuss it with them, and then at our next meeting, we discuss their feedback, and we decide what makes sense to go forward. Because I think, I think we should have the school committee on board with us and be working in harmony with them, not surprising them with what we're doing.
I won't object to that. Does anybody have time to go to the school committee meeting?
It's a Tuesday, and actually, basketball season's just ending. I.
Is it Tuesday or Wednesday?
If Brad doesn't want to go, or if Brad's not available, I can go.
No, I can't go.
That's right, Tuesdays aren't your day. Okay, then I'll go. And I'll reach out to Nikki and Andy and talk to them separately.
In that meeting, they have their public hearing on the twelfth.
Oh, on the, on the budget?
Yeah.
Yes, that's a great, so you don't even have to get it on the agenda. You can just talk to them in the context of the public hearing for the budget.
Yep, I'll give them a, I'll give them a heads up.
Yep.
And that's three twelve meeting at BE, typically a BES.
Yes.
Um, circling back, we floated the idea of targeting a four percent savings on COLA, and I think, I think that we haven't discussed that yet.
We haven't discussed it yet.
We discussed it, but I don't think, I don't feel we've converged on it. So I just want to say, I'll say that I'm comfortable targeting four percent. I think it's going to be tough looking at all the pressures on the budget between the non-school and the school adds, but I think it's the right thing to do.
So I think you target it and see where it leaves us relative to combination of the levy limit and where it leaves us on the tax rate, and do the best we can.
Yeah.
And then if we need to adjust, then we have our justification for why we're adjusting.
Yes. Okay.
You know, I'm not wedded to it. I just want to start somewhere and see where it lands.
I know, and so, Jeff?
We had Marty.
Jeff, I want to convey something to you, and then I was giving it to Marty because you had asked, you had asked for us to make, give some, have some discussion around the COLA, and we just did. And we have agreed, we have decided that we are going to target four percent.
Right.
And we'll, and so I want to make sure that you know that that's something that the board has discussed amongst ourselves, and that we've all converged on it.
I heard that a lot of them talk.
Okay, good. I want to make sure you didn't miss it.
I did not miss it, no.
All right, so go ahead.
And then you'll convey it to the department, so they are aware of it, so they won't be the ones.
Yes.
That's.
No, 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 we're the, we're the elementary school leaders. We're the ones that each take that.
No, no, I, I, I know. They can make their own.
They can make their own, but you're asking them to tell everybody, which is going to set an expectation, right?
Well, the, well, the.
One thing I want to make sure.
It's like, well, I can say, we can make it clear that this is a select board decision, and that we are targeting it, that it is our target, but that it is subject, it is subject to further review of the budget, and, and it is fundamentally subject to change. It's like, if it turns out that by reducing it, we avoid a prop two and a half override, well, that's a strong reason to pull it back some. I mean, would I crank it down to one to avoid an override? That seems a little extreme, but if bringing it from four to three and a half would avoid the override, well, that's a strong, that's a compelling case. So it's a target. We have to see how reality fits around that. And is it going to completely kneecap it, or is it going to fit right in nice and easy? And as the advisory committee is pretty tuned to make its own recommendations. So Jeff, thank you for letting me convey the thing I wanted to convey, and I think you guys had something you wanted to bring up to us.
Marty wanted to speak.
Okay.
I just wanted to say there was a discrepancy on the submitted fire department budget according to Chief Martel.
Okay.
On the chief salary, it was listed as fourteen thousand dollars. Chief Martel kind of implied to us that he's done some comparative salary analysis, and he's wanting a value of eighteen thousand dollars for the chief salary.
Has he provided any comparative analysis?
He verbally, he did, he gave us numbers from other places that he, you know, compared.
Yeah, there's a couple others that were in the, you know.
Yeah.
Okay.
So this is like his per household, and then this is.
Per household?
Yeah, and then this is salary.
No, no, no.
No, 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 that's got nothing to do with the chief salary.
Yeah, it does. Their salaries are in the emails. Yeah, in his email. This is the packet. Yeah, this is.
Okay, but, okay, then, because the issue, for me to, for me personally, consider that, it's like, I'd want to know, okay, what towns are comparing to, how do they, what makes those towns relevant comparisons?
That's fine. I'm just making you aware of it, so you guys can have your own discussion.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. And so he's, so, his, so we have the request at fourteen thousand dollars I'm seeing here, but you're saying he's intending to increase his request to something around eighteen thousand dollars, based on his market analysis?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We have not voted on that one yet, but you know. And he's submitting two articles on eighteen and four appropriations.
Okay.
He submitted way more than two articles.
Way more than two?
Way more than two, yeah.
Okay.
I think he submitted five articles. And he's hardly, hold on, one more please. And I don't check that zip code is the right one. That is the correct, the roof that he showed me is the right roof report. Hold on, one more please.
Oh, so the one that we have is the right one.
I have thermal imaging device from the chief, like fifty, eleven thousand.
Yes.
He has the flooding, twenty-five thousand, and he's leaving air compressor at eighty-two thousand. He did propose other warrant articles, but they are not my warrant articles.
Okay.
And did you change this now to eighteen, or are you leaving it at fourteen?
I have eighteen in my spreadsheet.
For the fire chief seller?
Yeah.
When is it replaced with?
So.
Why sell?
Who's got it?
But I mean, the rain was still significant.
We looked on the individual.
I have it as eighteen. He probably sent me the update.
Yeah, it's a read-only.
Kelly, my schedule two thousand.
I have eighteen for the testing. No, I don't have.
Okay.
Yeah, eighteen, I see.
Based on their.
I think they were saying it should have been eighteen and not fourteen.
Right. You have, you have like email from the chief saying that you wanted eighteen, or is this just?
So he presented, he came to the meeting last Thursday.
Yeah.
And presented his budget, and gave us this work cost analysis, and presented why he thought that he needed the eighteen thousand based on other town in his packet.
Oh, so he didn't submit.
But we, yeah, so he submitted it to us, but when, or to talk about it, but when we went to the spreadsheet, it said fourteen thousand instead of the eighteen thousand.
Yeah, that's what he said for us. So am I being asked to update the spreadsheet? Please, I'm happy to do that.
I would say that we should ask, we should use this to, opportunity to ask Chief Martel if he has any updates to his request, and if so, if he could provide any supporting information with that, with his market analysis, and he could send that to us, and then we can consider it.
Yeah, okay.
I think that makes the most sense, and, because my thought is, if he doesn't, I don't see a point in updating the number if he's not going to ask us. But I don't mind nudging him and saying, you got something to ask me? And that'll also encourage him to provide his, his market analysis.
Can I ask one more question of you, Kelly, as far as when you, the number you gave me as far as under the levy limit, I don't remember what week that was. Do you have any updated information as far as?
The school passed over the levy limit by a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars.
Okay, that's what I was afraid of, but I wasn't sure if I heard that one fifty, if you put a place or anything into the school.
We don't have the police contract, and we don't have the district school, so that number's going to go up.
So, so you didn't assume a police contract number either then?
I did not, no. As I stated.
And then the, then the regional high school, okay. So with the budget that was presented, so the budget presented with the way to increase people ask for, is that what's a hundred fifty thousand over levy with the school?
With the school.
The FY twenty-four, twenty-five ask?
I do not put in what everybody asked for, because people ask for more than, I don't know what the select board is going to request. So I did the numbers just as an exercise to see where they landed with level funding.
From twenty-four?
Yes. All, I leveled funding all of the expense accounts and putting in a three-point-seven percent increase across the board, and it puts us over, I mean, but to, based on projected revenues.
And that includes?
And that's not including the five percent for the police that we haven't put in here.
No, I have not.
But it does include a three-point-seven percent.
Oh, it does include three points.
Yes, I believe that I.
All right, so it's not as bad as you thought, so.
No, because I don't believe the police number's in there. The police number's not in there, neither is the district school.
No increase for either one, but level funded for both of those, from twenty-four.
Yes.
Yeah. Now, from what I heard from you guys, the district, the district allocation will be close to what it was last year, so we're not expecting a big increase there. We've been led to not expect.
The regional one, no. It's supposed to be the same or a little bit less.
Okay, thank you.
But I just got confused, Kelly, on your last sentence, because when you told me, again, whenever it was, we're a hundred and fifty under, that did not, you said it did not include this increase for the elementary school, right?
Correct. It didn't include the school. It didn't include the police department wages, and it didn't include the district school.
All right, now I'm confused. I thought your original statement was somewhere around, with the new school budget, elementary school, it put us a hundred and fifteen, thirteen thousand over the levy limit with level funding.
So you're talking two different things. Jeff is asking me about a number I gave him prior to getting the school, so that's why it is a different answer.
No, okay, but as of, as of today, with the elementary school, what they're requesting were over a hundred and thirteen, is what you said?
A hundred and thirteen thousand, six hundred dollars and fifty cents.
Okay. And there's some other incremental up from the police, because it was a three-point-seven five over the five, which we just agreed. So unless we want to override, then we're going to have to figure out whether.
And importantly, and that's obviously not including any warrant articles.
Typically, warrant articles are funded from free cash, which is.
Free cash, borrow, or transfer. They're not typically reasonably appropriate.
Okay, so this is, this is the main point, that I wanted to at least make sure we're all on the same page, is that what we have right now is we're on a levy override over the levy limit. So that's where we have to start figuring out scenarios.
The combination of the requests that we have received from the, from the departments and the school, and the, and expected increases in police based on the outcome of the negotiation with the union, those will all put the budget over our levy limit. I mean, my, my read of the numbers is that with the school, it's going to be, the, the budget is increasing by half a million. Now, that is, now, we have about a ten million dollar budget. The tax levy is six million dollars. And I don't believe state aid is going up. I don't believe local revenue is going up, so.
The tax levy is seven million dollars.
Oh, seven million, thank you. That's a little bigger piece. But that still puts us in a, I would say, a seven or eight percent increase in the tax levy. And with note, and that means that if no one's property changes value with no new growth, that's a seven or eight percent increase in the tax bills.
We have roughly, at this point, I can safely say we'll have forty-seven thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars in new growth, based on the current new growth we have at this point in time right now.
Mm-hmm. All right, so that takes, that takes some of it off, but that's, I would say that still puts us in six, seven percent.
Would you like the projected revenues?
I would like those. I'm not sure I'm ready to go through them in this context. Or, well, maybe. I might be ready. I'll take them. You're going to read them to me?
So we have the prior year levy limit, which is down, because we have an abatement, so it was an adjustment to the prior year levy. It's only down by roughly twenty-five hundred dollars by one year. So the prior year levy limit is six million, six hundred and sixty-five thousand, three hundred and forty-one thousand, forty-five cents.
That's FY twenty-four?
And, yes. So to that, you add two and a half percent, which is a hundred and sixty-seven thousand. Wait, no, wait, let me, wait. I did this in a spreadsheet. I shouldn't be reading that another day. The spreadsheet won't lie. And I might have missed that, so. So, that's right. So your, your two and a half percent is a hundred and sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two thousand, four cents. The new growth to date, which will increase, is forty-seven thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars, with a total projected levy limit of six hundred, six million, eight hundred and eighty-one thousand, one hundred and thirteen dollars and forty-nine cents. We also have a debt exclusion, which was voted by the town. Roughly, it will, I have it in as thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty-six, because that's what we had on the recap sheet last year, and I won't have that number until we do the recap sheet this year. So our total allowable levy is six million, nine hundred and twenty-one thousand, sixty-nine dollars and forty-nine cents. Projected state aid is, I'm using last year's law. I always use a lower projected number and a higher assessment number when I'm budgeting, because it's safer.
I agree.
So we can't go wrong in either direction. It can only get better.
Right.
So the projected state aid is three million, eighty-three thousand, one hundred and eighty-six. And are you taking notes for this, Sarah? Because I can just email this to you.
Yeah.
Kelly, is that state aid net of expenses, or is that revenue only?
No, it is not.
Okay, thank you.
Other available funds that go into the recap that are part of the revenue and so forth is roughly nine hundred and seventy-nine thousand, fifty-seven dollars. That includes all of the free cash and the EMS articles, which are funded from other revenues. So this is all part of setting up. So we have local receipts and projected at one million, seventy-two thousand, four hundred and four dollars and thirty-three cents, for a total projected revenue of five million, one hundred and thirty-four dollars, thirty-four thousand, six hundred and forty-seven dollars and thirty-three cents. So your total appropriations, based on the budget, would be eleven million, five hundred and seventy thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars and thirty cents, which is more than you see in the budget, but that's because you have to appropriate other things on the recap. Which is more than you see in the budget, but that's because you have to appropriate other things on the recap sheet.
Right, 'cause the, the, yeah, the recap sheet works different, when I got into the recap sheet, I realized it works differently than I approached it and I had to, I was trying to re- realign things to fit in with the recap sheet and allow the recap sheet to drive a lot of work.
So the, the other costs that are on the recap sheet, which include.
Hold on Kelly, can I go back, uh, some of my numbers didn't add up, so state aid was three million, eighty-three thousand?
One hundred and eighty-six.
One hundred and eighty-six, okay, and then other funds was nine hundred and seventy-nine thousand?
Fifty-seven.
Make a motion that we extend meeting.
Sir, sorry, alright, all in favor of extending the select board meeting, uh, per policy, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, alright, so nine hundred and seventy-nine thousand and change or?
Nine hundred and seventy-nine thousand, fifty-seven dollars.
Okay, thank you, I, I'm just rounding the nearest thousand. And local receipt was a hundred and seventy-two thousand?
One million, seventy-two thousand, four hundred and four.
Ten seventy, that's.
That's a very important zero.
That's, that's, that's where, that's where I, that's where I missed it, okay.
That's where you're on a, a stray.
Yeah, that's a four, five, okay, thank you, I'm, I'm with you.
And when you, when you email it to her, can you?
Uh, to us.
Cause I'm not, I'm not even doing it right.
Yeah, I started to, I'm like, yeah, no, this is not happening.
So the total appropriations are eleven million, five hundred and seventy thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars and thirty cents. That includes the free cash articles and the EMS warrant articles, because it's all part of the calculation. The other costs on the recap sheet, which include offset receipts, which show up oddly enough on the page that says that they're giving us money, but we actually have to raise that money on the recap sheet,
Mm-hmm.
Um, is five hundred and sixty-seven thousand, one hundred and eighty-six dollars. Those are other costs on the recap sheet. I can give you a breakdown of what they are if you'd like, it's entirely up to you. So when we take our total annual budget of twelve million, one hundred and thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and eighty-three, thirty, subtract our projected revenue, which, which is the five million dollar number, we have a raising appropriate number of seven million, two thousand, seven hundred, thirty-five dollars and ninety-seven cents, which exceeds our total levy limit, um, now by roughly a hundred and thirteen thousand.
Using very conservative numbers.
Yes, using very conservative numbers, and that's using the current assessed values. They are going to go up because we had the growth last year, which is roughly three million dollars in, in assessment.
Mm-hmm, yes.
So that's going to go up and that's going to lower this number, so we'll be much closer to what we, what we need to do. So these are, these are just projected values based on the current available data.
Yes, 'cause the, the tax rate is set by the tax recap, which happens at the end of the calendar year. And that's when the new growth, that's when the final new growth number is available and all of that.
But that should be available by the end of the summer.
Oh, really? Okay.
It's the EKBs that we're looking for, which is the DOR certifying the current assessed data, uh, assessed values based on last year's new growth. They adjust all of the, um, values for the other five, which plugs into the recap sheet.
Okay, but the, so, but the new growth plugs into the, uh, the recap process.
Yep.
Which determines pretty, which determines how much we have to levy in taxes, which then determines how much everyone's tax bill is.
Yeah.
I remember we tried to figure this out when we did not have town administrator. It was a much slower process.
Well, it took us three years, we did it.
Alright, so.
If you all want to play, I completely recreated the recap sheet in Excel and you can move every number and it will all feed and change so you can look it. If you wanna play with the town receipts, you can see what it'll do. If you wanna play with the values, you can see what it'll do.
Send me a copy.
It's a nifty little, it's a nifty little thing.
Does it spit out the, uh, estimated tax rate?
It does, yes.
And you can figure out what it, like, if you allocate a hundred grand, what that specifically.
We had a thing like that ten, twelve years ago.
Yeah.
Yep, it will split out the estimated tax rate, so if, um, even though it exceeds our levy limit, estimated tax rate as it sits right now, which is, the values are gonna make a huge, huge difference in this, um, is roughly a dollar more.
Right, the values are one of the biggest inputs on that, so.
But again, it doesn't include any of the requested increases on the twenty-five budget, right, from the departments?
So the way I did, the way I did the projection was I leveled funded everybody's expense accounts and, and put in the, the salary, minus the school and the.
But we saw a number of, uh, departments raised and proposed more in their expenses.
Yeah, they did, they did, that made a big difference.
Yeah, yeah, so, so, so I'm saying, so if we include those, right, this hundred and thirteen thousand, I'll just keep coming up.
Yes.
Right, so I, I think we're all on the same, just based on these numbers, it would, it's possibility that we would be, be that override or something if we decided the budget is.
I think.
Unless we try to.
I, I think fundamentally, it's, the, the choice before us is to, is to go for, is to go forward with the override or how much do we wanna cut and are we interested in cutting enough to avoid the override?
Well, and the flip side is, is that, first of all, there's a lot of assumptions in there that, that are, are gonna shake out between now and town meeting. So before we even start talking about an override, Kelly, Kelly was very careful on how she phrased a lot of this. It doesn't include the valuation changes, it does not include the fact that the cherry sheet numbers typically, you know, all of our state representatives wanna get reelected, so generally speaking, those cherry sheet numbers between now and town meeting will go up.
Mm-hmm, usually the, the governor comes out with the best bang for the buck because they know the house and the senate are gonna throw it away.
Right.
So they get to feel good about themselves, they go, look what I tried to do for you, and then the house and the senate, they're gonna throw away the governors and then the next.
But even the, the last few years, though, they've come in within spitting distance of, of one another.
Yeah, they've actually been playing kinda nicely.
I'm actually going tomorrow morning to Holyoke to the legislative thing they're doing there.
So I, I, I refuse to panic and even use the word override yet until we see some more solid numbers.
Yeah, I would into the day, I would be over.
I guess, I guess the third option is to, is to, is, is to sit tight and see if the, uh, if the worst case scenario does manifest. Or see how much it involves, that's fair enough, um, Karen? Could you please ask Kelly for links to the cherry sheets and the recap form?
Go ahead, ask them.
You want me to send you some links to the cherry sheet?
I want them included in the minutes. That's what, that's where I was going, or would you, Kelly, let me rephrase that Karen, would you please include links to those things in the minutes? And I'm, and I can provide if needed, but I think Kelly can provide them a lot faster than me, might be the, uh, better way to put it. Alright, that did come out poorly Kelly, sorry about that.
Well, I mean, o- over time, the, the, the other larger question is, well, it's gonna show up in the morning, you heard about the G two thousand, the new air compressor on the fire station, which is what Chief Martel talked to us about as well last year, last, last week. So it, it's also important to understand, even if we avoid the, the, any sort of, uh, override requirement this year, obviously, going into next year, we're gonna have to think about what we're gonna do and, uh, right, 'cause I mean, you've got the air compressor, you've got potentially some sort of bash over some of our piece of equipment, the hydro, you've got at some point another fire, sometime, sometime in the next X years, right? You add some, and obviously we're gonna seek, you know, the need for another cruiser.
So when, when you borrow for very large things, like, like, you, you do a debt exclusion and it increases your levy limit, so you won't need an override. So if you wanna borrow, do a capital exclusion, which is a one-time purchase, um, it's a one-off, it's not gonna be spread out over the years, uh, that increases your levy limit. A debt exclusion increases your levy, your levy limit, as well as an override would increase your levy limit. So there are, there are funding options, so you wouldn't need an override. And the articles that you're talking about are, are typically funded with free cash, so that's also not gonna hit the tax rate, depending on how you fund them. You have more requests this year than you have for free cash, though, so you are, you have to pick and choose which of those you wanna support.
Right, but, but at least that's, that's a list that doesn't move as much as some of the budget stuff is moving, so that.
But to be clear, debt, debt exclusion still has to be paid back, just like an override.
Oh, yes, absolutely, absolutely, and it does need a town meeting vote, but it, it, it doesn't raise your levy limit forever. Whereas an override does, so.
Okay, good, Tom, excuse me, can I, can I ask a, I think we're, we're good with our, I just, when would be the next time that we, you could be able to schedule us so we could talk again once we have more information collected and we have further, further along, so to speak? Sometime end of April or what would be a good time, you think, to, uh?
Kelly, what was our target for wrapping up the operating budget?
Well, you didn't vote for the town meeting date, so I.
That's still on, that's still on the agenda.
I thought, I thought we, I thought we discussed a target date, um, with a general town meeting date in mind, rather than a hard one. And I thought the board, I thought the board discussed.
You did pick a date to close the warrant, but I don't remember what.
It was, I think it was three twenty-eight.
Yeah.
That, that sounds right.
So the end of this month, we're all gonna quote, then we'll pro the articles.
Okay. So.
I just wanna make sure that we get on the agenda again and we're not scrambling.
What date did we send?
But.
It was, or, I have the advisory put in the fourth, which makes it, it might set it should probably.
Not until the twenty-eighth.
We historically.
Probably get a warning list from her as far as what's been submitted.
Well, hold on, let's, let's come together, so, from a schedule standpoint.
Three weeks from now.
We have, we, I have planned.
Yeah, I saw that too.
So, so we have, um, the, the, the select board has voiced its, as a group has voiced its, its intention to close the warrant at the end of the month. To allow, to allow us to, to get it out to council and I'm sure there are other things that need to be done. So with that in mind, Kelly, when you say close the warrant, does that include the operating budget?
Everything, well, no, let me rephrase that, no one can submit a warrant article except the selectmen, once the warrant is closed.
Okay.
There is a warrant article that's already in the afforded budget, you can amend that article up until it goes to print.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So the budget is, is open until you decide that you're happy with it.
Okay, so we, so we are, so we are, people, we can receive requests or submissions between now and the end of the month, that we have not seen yet.
Correct.
Okay, so that tells me that the next time we should get together would probably be, um, at the beginning of April. In, whenever, uh, April fourth or whatever, the fir-, our regularly scheduled first Thursday of the month meeting in April. Does that make sense to the board? Okay, Jeff, does that make sense to your, to you?
I was thinking maybe mid-April, just so that we'd have a chance to look at the warrant articles, uh, or not.
Um, we.
Yeah, Tom, if, if you close an award on the twenty-eighth and somebody gives me warrant articles on Thursday at four o'clock, they're not gonna be ready to meet on a Thursday at six-thirty the following week, because.
Then, then, uh, then the third, then our third Thursday, our, our other meeting in April, the third Thursday, would seem like a better choice. Kelly, is, is that your recommendation that we plan to have that discussion with the advisory in, at our third Thursday meeting in April?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah, that might have been when we met last year, I'm not sure.
Third Thursday.
I think if that's what people are comfortable with, then that, that would work.
Just to be clear, that's April.
That works for us.
And I will, okay, and that is the eighteenth.
And there's no rule that says you can't leave on the eleventh if you're ready sooner or later, just focus on that one time.
Yes, I will caution the, uh, that is April vacation week, those of us with children in school. Um, if we have plans for April vacation, they would, uh, scheduling this for the eighteenth would, uh, require that we be back from those plans. Or we, Brad, do you have any plans for the April vacation that have you going away?
Uh, I don't control that calendar.
Okay, um, then let, let us, let's put a placeholder in, but Brad, and, and as I don't control that calendar so much myself either, we can both check and make, and confirm?
Right, I, I just wanted to raise the issue to make sure that we were able to come back again at some point that everyone's thinking about.
No, 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 I think, I think that was, thank you Jeff, that was.
I'm all, I'm all positive thinking this year, you know, I'm trying to push everything.
But Jeff, I think right now the plan is that we will, um, we are intending to do this on the eighteenth. It's like, that's school vacation week and so Brad and I have kids out of school that week, so we may shift it one week, one way or the other, if that's an issue.
If you send, you cannot shift it forward, you must shift it backward to the eleventh, because it needs to be at town council's hands by the twenty-second.
Got it.
So if you don't do it on the eighteenth, you have to do it the week before.
Okay.
I'd rather do it.
I, I would, that would, that would have been my preference anyway, to, uh, I didn't, I would rather have moved it up, but, um, okay, so.
One of those two.
Okay, alright, and so, and then what we can do is we, I think we should plan to have an agenda, an agenda item for our next meeting to review the warrant articles and to start deciding what we are. And, and make sure we understand, well, I guess the question is to the board, are we interested in discussing that at our next meeting on March twenty-first? Or do we wanna wait until April fourth when the, all the articles are?
Let's put it on the agenda and we can review what's in.
We can review what's in and we can then, anything else that needs to be talked about on April fourth can be talked on April fourth.
Correct.
And that way we can go into the meeting with advisory, with our ducks all lined up, okay, Karen, you heard that?
We do the warrant articles on three twenty-one, right?
Yes.
Whatever's in by then, we're okay.
I know we're also intending to meet with the sun fusions that.
Can I, can you get home? No, I haven't gone and sent it to you, send it to me, I haven't seen it, I swear, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So we're, um.
Cause then if I could just, I'm hooked over here. Have you sent us the?
I still have to do, have tab.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, which is something that is, I can even, you know, request any article, so it's been updated. Um, I don't have yours in here, we're currently a hundred and eighteen thousand less than what has been asked for without your six requests.
Fine.
I'm gonna say five requests is one of those, just to put.
I, I wanna just put them all on a table so that we, if we say no, say no, but.
Yeah.
Procall, I'm not sure.
That's what we get paid the big bucks for.
Alright, and then we also have to, we also should be discussing the date of the town meeting, I think there's been some.
Right.
Some, some concern has been expressed, and so I think we should. What?
Do you want?
And so, and so, and I, and I, and since advisory's here and they, they express a concern.
Tuesday is bad for you?
Unless we wanted to. No, I mean, I'll go Tuesday.
You better than Thursday.
I mean.
Does everybody prefer Thursday?
It's traditionally been a Thursday.
Right.
It, but you need to decide, we, we need to preserve the school.
So, so let's, 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 I'll make a motion that we, um, uh, target, and I'm gonna say target because we don't want the facilities available, target Thursday, June sixth, for the fallback date of Tuesday, the fourth, if the facility's not available.
And I'll let town council know so that they can schedule.
The only input we have on that is that when we met with Deb Boyd, she has.
Oh, she wanted the fourth.
Yeah.
Or she wanted the sixth, the Thursday, because that's what she already had us planned for.
Oh.
Because she has to attend a lot of other town meetings also.
Yeah, I think I'll address the board.
Oh, is it? Okay.
Well, then let's leave it to sixth.
Alright, and so that was a motion?
Yep, so we'll just, we'll just do it for the sixth, I'm gonna omit the, uh, fallback date.
Okay, so that's, can I get a second?
June sixth.
All in favor of, uh, having an annual town meeting for, uh, in, on June sixth, on Thursday, June sixth, twenty-twenty-four, please say aye.
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 And do you have a standard time that you want to do it?
Uh, six-thirty?
In the past, yeah. Yeah, the select board has typically met at six and then when we had a previous year's special town meeting, that would be at six-thirty and then the annual town meeting would be at seven, I think we've dispensed with the special town meeting and we try and start the annual town meeting at six-thirty.
Yes.
And I am all for maintaining that, uh, maintaining that continuity. We start the festivities at six-thirty.
Sarah, what do you know, are you using now?
Scam zero-two S at gmail dot com. I want me to.
Email her.
Yeah, you want me to email you that?
Email the request.
Did you just say scam?
Yes, it's my initials, whole part of my name. Yes, it's my initials, whole part of my name.
Yeah, my, 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 yeah, my, yeah, zero two, x, uh, gmail dot com.
Okay.
Yeah, come on, Cara, you should know it.
Tom, is there anything else we could do, we can adjourn our advisory meeting, is that? Anything else?
Uh, is there anything else that the, uh, that the select board would like to discuss with the advisory?
Nope.
Nope, I think we're good, is it, there's anything, if there's nothing else you guys wanna talk about, I think we're all done.
Yeah, thank you. Would you like to adjourn? Second? All in favor? Aye, okay.
And we are at the end of our agenda also.
Well, we also have to, uh. Uh, yeah, motion, Georgia.
Alright.
Yep.
Uh, I've heard two motions, I need your second.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor for adjourning at eight-thirty-six, please say aye.
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 Aye.